All right, I'll call this meeting to order on November 28 at 7:00 P.M. Please stand for the flag of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to recover what is its hands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Taylor, did you give the opening?
Sure. Dear Lord, landscape of freedom, every thread woven by our veterans shines with the valor of sacrifice. Today, we lift our hearts in powerful gratitude and deep appreciation for all our servicemen and women, past and present, especially those employees within the city that currently serve or have served, especially Mr. Tolliver, Mr. Lawson, Mr. Donphy, Mr. Flowers. Their selfishness creates the fabric of our nation's flag, each star a beacon of hope, each stripe a narrative of bravery. We thank you for granting them the strength to defend, the resilience to endure, and the compassion to protect. Bless them, O Lord, with your unfailing love and ensure their deeds are forever remembered and honored among us. May we never take that for granted, the peace their service has bestowed upon us, nor the freedom it secures. Guide us in ways to show our gratitude that go beyond mere words through actions that affirm their sacrifices are etched in our soul of our nation. Help us to remember that beyond every uniform is a heart of courage, a story of sacrifice, and a life dedicated to the greater good. In your name, we pray.
Amen. Sir Tolliver.
Mr. Lawson.
Here.
Mr. Booth.
Here.
Mr. Coman.
Here.
Ms. Sonne.
Here.
Mr. Donphy.
Here.
Mr. Flower.
Here.
Mr. Taylor.
Here.
Did everyone receive the minutes from the last meeting, October 28? Any corrections or additions? Motion to accept, so is second.
Mr. Booth.
Yes.
Mr. Coman.
Yes.
Ms. Sonne.
Yes.
Mr. Donphy.
Yes.
Mr. Flower.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Yes.
Are there any citizens' comments? Please step to the podium, give your name.
I think that is excellent, my girlfriend, right, on property over on Patton Street. I just had some questions, I don't know if you guys are the front of the book to answer them about the flood ordinance that was just accepted, primarily if that is permanent coordinates for being on the map, if you guys plan to contest that in the future, or if that is going to be the final acceptance on that.
I believe that is the final map, yes.
Now, as far as building, who would I contact, or what is the process? Are we allowed to build in the flood zones? I guess.
You actually are allowed to build in the flood zone, you are required to go through some steps to do that, though, yes.
Yeah, I know, like, the training post, for instance, is elevated, like, via concrete, but, like, over on Patton Street, you're obviously not going to pour that much concrete, right? So I guess my next question would be, how do you go about that? Is it going to be pylons, or how much elevation are we talking?
Yeah, FEMA requires a, I forget the name of the study, hydraulic study, based on your elevation of how far you would have to build the property on stilts, or potentially even increase the grade, which could be possible, it might not be a complete denial, you might be able to actually increase the grade there, but, you know, that study would tell you how far it would have to be. And if I'm not mistaken, you may be able to utilize another study that may have been taken place by adjacent properties, which may be helpful because those hydraulic sites can be expensive.
Yeah, I think that we're in the same heat as the training post, so I see they're not actually in the back, they're pretty low, but in the front, they're elevated, so I guess I need to get in touch with somebody here at the city to make a determination there, or?
Probably FEMA is going to be the ultimate decider on that.
Yeah. Now, if I'm not taking a mortgage, am I required to carry flood insurance?
No, no.
Okay. So I still need to seek that permission from FEMA initially?
Correct.
Okay. That's where I was kind of confused, wasn't getting a whole lot of feedback, so.
Yep.
I appreciate that, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is that something Michael Betts might have been put on as well, might be able to help guide her?
He might, but I think FEMA is probably going to be the best bet.
You have some contact information for that? I know that our area has a liaison with FEMA, I think they're based, I think it's Toledo, I can't remember Toledo or something. We did fight this elevation map for years.
Yeah, I wasn't sure.
It finally came, I think it's been a 10-year, about a 10-year battle, and it started about 10 years ago, and it's just now the final match, we appealed it in the field. And it did get moved some, because the majority of the town, a lot of it was in the, it was in the floodway.
From hill to hill.
Yep. So we did appeal a lot of that, so FEMA seems to have some leeway, so.
Yeah.
I would contact them, give them your address, and let them know where you're at, so.
Yeah, if you do, you will be able, looks like you should be able to find a lot of information there.
Yeah, I had no idea it was in the floodway, because the tracks are there, and they're so high, we wouldn't anticipate that particular area to be a flood zone, and unfortunately, the local real estate agent that I use neglected to disclose that, and since there are other properties, for sale in that smaller area by a similar agent, I would hope that that person would start.
Disclosing.
Disclosing that those lots are not part of this building, because I definitely communicated that to the agent at times.
We found that our wall at Crabtree doesn't classify as a flood retaining wall, because it has trees, that if a tree was to fall, it would compromise. That's part of what we found out, if you remember right when we talked about that. So that is why there's some ins and outs, and you would think that that place has held water for years, but the fact that it's not up to.
Technically.
Yes, technically, a flood wall, it allows, they say, they figure it, like, it's almost nonexistent, so. Actually, here's my number, if you want to reach out to me, I might be able to even help you get in contact with some people that have been through, you know, similar situations which are looking at, that can probably give you more guidance, maybe even a contact with someone with FEMA that they may have directly dealt with.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other citizens' comments? Okay. Any business and organizational comments? Committee discussion, did any committees meet since the last council meeting?
We had a finance committee meeting. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah. The days all run together, you know. We discussed the final budget for next year, everything looked really good, we referred some issues, the pool issues back to Parks and Rec to get a second opinion on the pool issue with the leaking water, and making sure it's not undermined, or making sure it can be repaired. But as all in all, the budget looks really good for next year.
And we have legislation for first reading on that tonight. Planning and development committee met, we had one item on the agenda, and that was the rental inspection code Title 31, and we have legislation for that tonight also. Department updates, Chief Collier.
We have the police department stats for the month of October, we had a total of 317 calls for servants, the 76 traffic stops, issued 34 citations, parking citations, investigated eight crashes, made 15 arrests, and 11 warrant arrests. Sort of cool off, so things are better than just a little bit. We're wrapping up all of our required continued professional training for the year, half the department just did their annual firearms qualification on Sunday, the other half will be doing it this Friday. We had a pretty good turnout for our Be Seen event we did for Trick or Treat, handing out blow sticks, it could seem like, and we took like all the 10 of them, so we'll probably do that again next year. And then I have two officers completing crisis intervention training next week.
I'm sure for everyone out there that you're aware of the animal that was found in the pond, and that is under investigation, I'm sure, by multiple agencies.
Yes, you mean, the officer taking the lead on the investigation.
Okay, I just wanted everyone to know that we're aware of what happened up there.
Who knew?
Someone, well, someone, someone, someone killed a dog and put it in Pine Groove Pond and weighed it down with something, and it was found, so.
At least it was found.
It was found in the water.
I know, but at least it was found.
Yeah, at least it was.
Corrode and the water.
Yeah, so that's what they're, it happened Saturday.
Last Friday.
Last Friday? Yeah, I was called to see if I had any camera footage, I don't, so. So.
I have a question on the parking citations, are those vehicles parked on the streets? What kind of parking citations?
They're all on the streets, and for various number of issues, a lot of them are basically abandoned vehicles that are getting citations and eventually getting towed.
Okay, so we're continuing to work on that, great. Any other questions?
Right, how's your vehicles, everything good? Have there no major issues with anything?
How many, how many lawsuits are only shift to one?
It kind of varies at the moment, because I have two officers on light duty for medical issues, so the current setup is two officers working 6:00 A.M. to 6:00 P.M., one officer working 10:00 A.M. to 10:00 P.M., and then two working 6:00 P.M. to 6:00 A.M. again, so from 10 to 6, there's three, 6 to, there's three as well, and otherwise generally two.
And they overlap for weekends.
Any other questions for Chief Collier? Thank you. Mr. Rowe, do you have an update for us?
I do, so this is actually hot off the presses, this is a Supreme Court case that I was actually reading today, it dealt with interpretation of the Open Meetings Act, I'll also read salient selection of occasions to kind of give you a flavor of what happened. So, the Open Meetings Act requires that a public official conduct all deliberations, as we all know, on official business only in an open meeting. Of course, the obvious exception to that is executive sessions, which, one of the permitted purposes for an executive session is to consider the dismissal of a public employee subject to whether or not the public employee requests a public hearing. And this case from the Supreme Court involved a police chief at a village council meeting who was terminated, the chief had requested a public meeting, or, I'm sorry, a public hearing, but the council chose to conduct only some of the proceedings in public, and after the presentation of evidence at the hearing, the village council adjourned to executive session to consider the charges against the police chief and to reach the decision. So the question that the Supreme Court addressed was whether that procedure was consistent with the Open Meetings Act, and they squarely held that it was not. They held that because the police chief had requested the public hearing, all aspects of the hearing, including deliberations, had to be held in public. That's important because both the trial court and the Court of Appeals got that question wrong, and the Supreme Court clarified that whole got it wrong, that in fact, upon the request of the public official subject to termination, once that public employee requests a public hearing, everything has to be done in public. Like I said, this is hot off the presses, I just got the email notification today about it, and so was looking at that, but I thought that that was kind of an important thing to highlight in terms of my report. I guess if there are any questions about that, I can do, I can answer those questions related to that case.
Mr. Rowe? Why do you think that's, does that pertain to us?
It pertains to every municipality in the state of Ohio.
Right, I understand, so what you're saying is that because he requested a public hearing, a public hearing, they went into executive session for part of the, they violated it?
Yeah. Correct. Yeah, so in this particular case, because the police chief had requested a public hearing, he was entitled to both the deliberations as well as the presentation of evidence to be made publicly and not.
And they went into executive for part of that?
After the presentation of evidence, they went into executive for deliberations.
And they were supposed to deliberate out publicly?
That's what the Supreme Court held. Now, the reason for the confusion, I think, in the lower courts in this particular case was because they were relying on an old Supreme Court case that said the act of terminating is a quasi judicial proceeding, and as we all know, judges always go back, they don't deliberate in public, they deliberate in private, so that's why the lower courts ruled that way, the Supreme Court, though, said, no, they got it wrong, that old case isn't the one that's providing the rule of decision. The rule of decision is any aspect of an employee termination, if there is a request of a public hearing, and that's only triggered if there is a request, but not a request, it's not in play.
Right. Yeah, it's our city manager requested a public hearing.
I don't know, since I've been recused from that, I think, or are you aware? I'm not, I'm not.
But that pertains only to termination, not any other aspect of?
The statutory language is consideration of a dismissal, so.
Okay, just want to make sure that was where we're going.
But only when a public hearing has been requested by the official, that's what I guess. And what happened there, so just practically speaking, what happened was, the Supreme Court sent it back to the village council in that case to hold a second hearing. So it's not like, so the remedy is just, hey, follow the correct procedures, it's not a complete evaluation of.
Any other?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Moving on to ordinances, we need to add ordinance 9024 to the agenda. So move, second.
Mr. Coman.
Yes.
Mr. Lawson.
Yes.
Mr. Donphy.
Yes.
Mr. Flower.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Lawson.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, ordinance for second reading, 8624.
An ordinance to authorize payment of the city of Nelsonville's membership dues to the Outdoor Recreation Council of Appalachia. Whereas by ordinance 23-19, council authorized the city's membership in the Outdoor Recreation Council of Appalachia, ORCA, Regional Council of Government. Whereas the city was a founding member of ORCA, whereas the city's membership dues will soon become due in ordinance 23-19, required for council approval and authorized payment of any membership dues by separate ordinance and council. Whereas council which is approved and authorized payment is current membership dues. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, as follows. Hereby council, council hereby authorizes and approves payment of the city's membership dues to the Outdoor Recreation Council of Appalachia, Regional Council of Government, in an amount up to $5,373. City manager and city auditor shall take all steps necessary to submit payment to ORCA of the city's membership fees, provided that ORCA submits to the city an invoice for the amount specified in Section 1. The city auditor shall take all steps necessary under law to arrange for appropriations of funds for the payments authorized and directed by council herein. Nothing in this ordinance shall be construed as authorizing any expenditure of funds, or as appropriating any expenditures of funds, other than as specifically and expressly authorized or appropriated herein. City council hereby finds that this ordinance was adopted in a meeting open to the public as required by law. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect at the earliest time permitted by law, duly enacted by council on second reading the 11th day of November 2024.
Motion to adopt? So move. Second. Any citizens' comments on adoption?
The shoe, the amount again, I didn't hear correctly.
5,373.
5,000?
Yeah.
And J, okay, thank you.
Any council discussion? Have we received the invoice yet?
Not yet, I can request it from, she said she can get it turned around immediately.
Okay. Sir Collier.
Ms. Sonne.
Yes.
Mr. Donphy.
Yes.
Mr. Flower.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Lawson.
Yes.
Mr. Booth.
Yes.
Mr. Coman.
Yes. 8624 passes. Ordinance for first reading, 8724, if someone would like to introduce it, I'll introduce it.
An ordinance to adopt in Nelsonville City Code Title 31, property maintenance. Whereas Article 18, Section 7 of the Ohio Constitution establishes, establishes pro rule and thus permits a charter municipality to exercise any power and perform any function necessary for conducting its affairs and directing its governance. Whereas Article 18, Section 3 of the Ohio Constitution permits municipalities to adopt local police, sanitary, and other similar regulations to promote the health, safety, and welfare of its citizens. Whereas the adoption of this title will protect the public health, safety, and welfare of the residents of the city of Nelsonville by setting minimum standards for all structures and premises, and by establishing minimum requirements for safe and sanitary maintenance of rental property, structures, equipment, and facilities for light, ventilation, space, heating, sanitation, protection from the elements, life, safety, safety from fire, and other hazards, and fixing the responsibilities of owners, operators, and occupants. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, as follows. Nelsonville City Code is hereby amended to adopt Title 31, property maintenance, as identified in Exhibit A, a copy of which is attached heretofore and incorporated herein by reference. City council hereby finds that this ordinance was adopted in a meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect at the earliest time permitted by law, duly enacted by council on second reading the 25th day of November 2024.
Are there any citizens' comments? Any council discussion?
Do, do, do we have a code already? I mean, I'm just, I'm not arguing anything, I'm just asking.
We do have a code for rental inspections, but currently under that code, it is done by complaint only?
Right.
The city does not go out and inspect rental units?
Who's going to do this?
That's, once we, if this is adopted, then we'll set up the procedure for inspection.
Who's going to inspect it?
Yeah.
How often, once a year?
Correct.
Thank you.
Ordinance 8824, if someone would like to introduce it. Introduce it.
An ordinance to make expenditures for current yearly budget and expenditures of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio for the 2025 year. Whereas the city needs a permanent appropriations budget ordinance for the year of 2025. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, as follows. Council hereby establishes and provides as the current expenditures of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, for the 2025 year, the sums described and set forth in Exhibit A, a copy of which is attached heretofore and incorporated herein by reference. Such sums shall be and hereby are set aside and appropriated for the 2025 year. Accordingly, the sums of $14,295,250 is hereby appropriated. The city auditor is hereby authorized to submit the city's certificate of resources pursuant to this ordinance to the Athens County Budget Commission. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect immediately upon its adoption pursuant to Section 4.11 of the Nelsonville City Charter, as this ordinance provides for appropriations for current expenditures, duly enacted by council on second reading the 25th day of November 2024.
Any citizens' comments? Yes.
That, does that include any lawsuits that are outstanding against the city, provisions for if it would be resolved during calendar year?
If I'm not mistaken, that would be covered by the insurance account at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Any other citizens' comments? Council discussion?
It's a pretty good budget, I think everything is to a T, spot on.
Did I not get, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I applaud council for getting this done before the end of the year, we have had to extend, in my first few years, we had to extend the time because the budget wasn't done, and over the last two or three years, it's been done ahead of time, so once again, I congratulate all the councils for getting it done.
Mr. Flower.
Exhibit A.
Should have been in your packet, but you got the email.
In your email.
In your email.
In my email?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
This is the first reading, so you'll have time to review.
Sure, yeah.
If you can't find it, let me know.
Okay, thank you.
Is that available for us, or you two?
It's available for anybody that would like the copy of it, sure.
Yeah, absolutely.
So if I asked her for the email, she would. I'll just take a regular copy, big print.
It's only 25 cents paid.
It's a big print, I paid for it.
And it is in larger, larger print.
It is in large font, and Nancy takes cash. We know that, because we thought we bought her off. That's right, I do remember that, yeah, we bought her off. She became part of the gang in Floodwoods.
Okay. Ordinance 8924, if someone would like to introduce it. I'll introduce it.
An ordinance demanding the 2024 appropriations ordinance. Whereas the 2024 appropriations need to be amended. Whereas appropriations of $10,000 to Number 100 General Fund Line Item 100-624-40020, building maintenance is necessary. Whereas appropriations of $6,000 to Number 100 General Fund Line Item 100-200-50012, vehicle repair and maintenance is necessary. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, as follows. The 2024 appropriations ordinance is amended to appropriate from the unappropriated balance to the following fund. Appropriations in the sum of $10,000 from the unappropriated balance of the general fund, Number 100, to line item Number 100-624-40020 for building maintenance. Appropriations in the sum of $6,000. Appropriations in the sum of six thousand dollars from the unappropriated balance of the general fund number one hundred to line item number one zero zero dash two zero zero dash five zero zero one two for vehicle repair and maintenance. The total unappropriated balance is decreased by said amount until the appropriations in each respective fund mentioned above are increased by said amount. The city auditor is hereby authorized to submit changes to the city's certificate of resources pursuant to this ordinance to the Athens County Budget Commission. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect immediately upon its adoption pursuant to section four point one-one of the Nelsonville City Charter, as this ordinance provides for appropriations for current expenses, duly enacted by council on second reading the twenty-fifth day of November two thousand twenty-four.
Any citizens' comments? Council discussion?
This for the roof repair?
Ten thousand, yeah.
Yeah, ten thousand for the roof repair, and what's the six thousand for the, is that for the Red Rocket?
The fire engine.
The Red Rocket shouldn't need anything.
Is for the fire engine that they're trying to replace. Remember the engine that we rebuilt?
Oh, this is for the water pump and the cooling system.
So on the roof repair, did we check with our insurance company on that?
Yes. They had an adjuster come on, look at it, and they said it should be covered. I submitted some pictures and a quote to them already.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Great. Good idea, thank you.
Got a question. If it's covered, why are we appropriating money?
Deductible.
Thank you.
We pay upfront, they do use this.
Follow-up question, how much of the roof are they going to cover?
Just the section that's damaged by the police department.
By the police department?
On top of the, the barbed area.
Oh, I thought you said by the police. He did say that.
I thought maybe they shot the hole in the roof.
Yeah, right. Maybe they were spinning the gun.
Resolution twenty-three, twenty-three, if someone would introduce it.
Mr. President Reagan, we still have ordinance ninety, twenty-four that we just added.
Oh, does that jump in here?
Yeah.
Okay. Back up. Ordinance ninety, twenty-four, if someone would introduce it. I'll introduce it.
An ordinance to adopting a professional services agreement, the D L D for professional services related to Nelsonville Dog Park and authorizing the city to enter into the professional services agreement. Whereas it is necessary for the city to enter into a professional services agreement and to engage professional services associated with the planning, design, bidding, and construction services for the Dog Park project, including a shelter house, fencing with gates, asphalt access path, and a parking area with A V A access. Whereas Nelsonville City Charter, section four point zero eight fifteen, empowers council to provide for the employment of engineering and other professional services on a consulting basis when deemed necessary. Whereas D L Z has agreed to provide the professional services for a lump sum fee not to exceed thirty-four thousand, six hundred dollars. Whereas it is in the best interest of the city for the city to engage D L D to provide the professional services for the fee to which D L D has agreed. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. Council hereby approves the professional services agreement attached heretofore and incorporated herein by reference as Exhibit A for the Nelsonville Dog Park project. The city manager, acting city manager, and or police chief is hereby authorized to execute the professional services agreement on behalf of the city. Accordingly, the city hereby engages D L D for the professional services to be rendered, including planning, design, bidding, and construction services for the Dog Park project, including a shelter house, fencing with gates, asphalt access path, and a parking area with A V A, A V A access for the Nelsonville Dog Park project. The city shall pay D L Z up to thirty-four thousand, six hundred dollars to provide the professional services. Nothing in this ordinance shall be construed as authorizing any expenditure of funds or as appropriating any expenditures of funds other than as specifically and expressly authorized or appropriated herein. City council hereby finds that this ordinance was adopted in a meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect at the earliest time permitted by law, duly enacted by council on second reading the twenty-fifth day of November two thousand twenty-four.
Any citizens' comments?
Uh, the last two monthly meetings with the Dog Park Committee has been canceled. Um, and the next one is next week, I think.
Okay.
That, that concerns me because they had, there's some things they still need to talk about, I thought.
I have a meeting with Michael Betts this Thursday already. Uh, I'm going to try and get at least one or so members of the Dog Park Committee to come into that meeting and discuss some stuff then as well.
Any council discussion?
Excuse me. Any of this information from the grants that are coming in for that specific?
It's all covered by.
It's all covered by grants.
Okay. The capital, yeah. Yeah, the capital.
Yeah, they, they have.
So it is covered by grants? Okay.
They have a planning section of it for the engineering and design.
So is, is the, um, is the, uh, professional services, the, are they going to come in and, and tell what needs to be done as the, uh, for their design?
Their engineering and the project. Their engineering.
They do all the engineering, put it out to bid, get the subcontract, the general contractor lined up. Really gets all the subcontractors.
So they're not doing the business, they're just doing the, they're just doing the bidding out to.
Kind of manage the whole problem.
Subcontractors, I think.
They do the engineering and kind of the project management.
Okay.
People.
So that's what we're paying thirty, thirty-four thousand, six hundred dollars for? That has nothing to do with the building or any structure on the property?
No.
Okay, right.
And they'll make sure that, like, all the A V A is through, you know, so that lots of stuff will be the code.
But it is covered by grants, don't forget that.
Yes.
I have one more question.
Are they going to put out what they're, what they're using for the materials before it's finished, like, how much gauge the fencing is and things like that? Will somebody be overseeing that? Because there's a lot of choices.
I, I think that would be your Dog Park Committee that would have a voice in that, wouldn't you think? Yeah, and I, I don't even think they've chosen all that stuff, you know, I mean, I think this is the.
Well, she brought up a lot of good things about that fencing, so I understand her. Because that, that influences the cost greatly. Huge.
Counsel could ask, um, for that information to be reported by D L Z for the decisions on.
That's a good idea.
I think counsel should approve it some, some way.
Well, that would, um, once we do the ordinance to appropriate, correct?
Yeah, and the plans.
Well, what happens if you, you decide you want nine gauge, which is a little strong for the fencing, but then everybody says, well, we only want to spend this money, which would only work for eleven and a half gauge? How can you approve what you're not sure you want yet?
D L Z will provide that information.
I don't think they have that information.
I can't dispute that.
Well, I understand, D L D is going to come up with design, build, and materials that want to be used to enter the Dog Park.
And then.
And they will, and they will present it to the council. And the council will approve that design or say, no, hey, we need something a little bit different.
Thank you.
To where you, if you go to the, uh, Parks and Rec Commission, the committee meeting, it should be discussed, and then input for corrections can be made up then. That's how more, that's how normal contracts work when you do this.
It just would sound like they would.
It's to get the design planned out of what you want, and once you get that up, how they want it built and everything, they'll, once everything is approved, they'll send it out for bid for contractors.
Yeah, this is just a very, 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 yeah, just this process.
Will they be using contractors from Athens County, or is there requirement for that?
Usually they do use, uh, their local contractors as possible, yeah.
Yeah. They put out for bids and go from there. Yeah. If there's a contractor that does that kind of, if there's someone that does that.
Uh, for instance, I know we've used in the city, um, for fencing, a local, I think you got the planes, um, but, you know.
I have a great fencing contractor too, since I moved on. Oh, yeah. I got one.
Resolution twenty-three, twenty-three, if someone would like to introduce it. I'll introduce it.
New resolution, authorizing the city to enter into an agreement with career connections for the hiring of an administrative assistant. Whereas by resolution twenty-three seventeen, council previously authorized the city manager to engage career connections to provide services dealing, I'm sorry, to provide services relating to the hiring and employment of a part-time administrative assistant. Whereas in its annual staffing ordinance, council has previously provided for the position of a part-time administrative assistant for the city. Whereas the administrative assistant should meet high standards of professionalism in order to appropriately provide administrative service to the city. Whereas the administrative assistant shall have and shall perform such duties as required by the city manager or provided by law, and failure of the administrative assistant to fulfill such duties may result in immediate termination of employment. Whereas through career connections, the acting city manager has identified a qualified person to serve as administrative assistant to the city on a full-time basis. Whereas city council determines engaging a full-time administrative assistant is in the best interest of the city. Now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. The city manager, acting city manager, and or police chief shall be and hereby are authorized to enter into an agreement with career connection to provide for the employment of a full-time administrative assistant. A copy of the agreement is attached heretofore as Exhibit A. The administrative assistant shall have and perform such duties as required by the city manager or provided by law. Failure of the administrative assistant to fulfill such duties may result in immediate termination of employment. Council shall by separate legislation provide for any appropriations of funds if may be necessary. City council hereby finds that this resolution was adopted in a meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. This resolution shall be in full force and effect at the earliest time permitted by law, duly adopted by council on first reading the eleventh day of November two thousand twenty-four.
Motion to adopt?
So let's, let's, can we discuss something? I just want to make sure that there's money appropriated in a full-time position.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get, yeah, we'll.
Oh, you're motioning.
Yeah.
Motion to adopt.
So moved. Second. Okay. Any citizens' comment?
Yeah, they just threw me out.
Any citizens' comments? Any council discussion?
There we go.
There we go, now we're ready.
Yeah.
So is there, is there funding, not that there doesn't need to be a full-time, uh, a full-time person, but is the money there?
It's part-time, isn't it?
It's a part-time position, so there's some confusion, I think, in the contract language, but.
No, there's no confusion right here, it's the contract, it says starting out part-time.
Okay. All right.
And nothing is said in here about this being, for the code officer also, it alludes to basically the city manager.
And we, we need.
Sorry.
Would you define what you just said?
It's for the city manager.
It looks as though it's written strictly for the city manager.
Thank you.
The code officer is supposed to be included in this. It is not a full-time position starting out. It is a part-time position.
Thank you.
And this is written in the contract.
Is career connections just the headhunter for this person?
Yes.
Yeah, it's a ten-page.
And we have to pay them to find?
We currently do not have the administrative assistant. I, I don't believe we do, if I recall, in the staffing ordinance as a full-time position, so it can't be hired on.
Part-time.
Yeah, so it, so no one can be hired on in full-time in that position until the staffing ordinance is changed. So it will be part-time. So I think that's, I thought when I came in and heard, it sounded like that was some of the confusion between the staffing ordinance, because the staffing ordinance wouldn't allow a full-time position there currently.
If I'm not mistaken, um, Mrs. Barber, uh, who was the code enforcement, was also, when she also, Mr. Frank's, uh, assistant back there in the office?
Yes.
Yeah, it was acting with positions were combined in the one.
Yeah, and it was a full-time position.
But the, the positions aren't combined into one, they're not combined.
I believe it was Mr. Rowland.
God.
Okay. God.
So code enforcement is or is not worth the benefit?
Yes.
Well, I read.
The system will provide general office support for everyone.
She'll be answering the phone.
Yeah, and I, I read it as that it's going to help the code officer, because then it allows the code officer to actually do code versus administrative assistant work.
Right.
So it's definitely going to help the code officer, because he can be out on the streets, which is, I think, where we need it.
That's exactly where, and will, will she be able to, um, will she be able to assist, like, if he needs this ran and do, okay.
It's twenty-twenty-four, it could be a he or she.
Devin, do we have a candidate?
What's that?
I assume by way of this written there is a candidate?
Yeah.
They have someone.
Yeah, I interviewed about five individuals.
Okay.
Prior to making a decision.
So when, when is he or she or they going to start?
Uh, I got to reach out to them about their availability after this gets, this gets personal, but it should be.
How, how is it going to divide up as far as time with person?
Whoever needs assistance at the moment, it's going to be fairly even, split, I imagine.
But you got somebody back there for your department, though.
This, this is for the.
This is just for the city manager.
Okay. Yeah, there was, yeah, there's, I've kind of always been somebody back there, uh, before.
Years ago.
Yeah.
Oh, it was Gail. Longest.
So when we say part-time, how many hours a week is that?
It was supposed to pay.
I, I had discussed around thirty hours a week, ten to one.
Thirty, and the pay discussed, if I'm correct, is nineteen an hour.
Correct.
Did you get an answer to your question?
Yes.
Okay. Right, any other discussion? Motion to adopt?
But how can you adopt something if it's not correct?
Right, so there, if, if this is, council is wanting to clarify this is part-time, there will need to be a motion to amend the rapid system, full-time, part-time, of up to thirty hours.
Yes, okay, so I'll make the motion to clarify in the contract that it is a part-time position up to thirty hours per week and nineteen dollars.
Okay. So moved. Let's go back and watch replay on that one, I think.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Mr. Flower?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Coman?
Yes.
Ms. Sonnen?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, yeah.
Okay, so do we need a new motion now, so?
So clerk call the roll on adoption.
Mr. Flower?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Coman?
Yes.
Ms. Sonnen?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-three, twenty-three passes. Uh, resolution twenty-three, twenty-four, if someone would like to introduce it. I'll introduce it.
A resolution instructing the council clerk to place in the ordinance book of the city an ordinance passed by a ballot measure by the voters of the town city on November fifth, two thousand twenty-three. Whereas there was a proposed ordinance, issue twenty-three, submitted to the voters of the city on the November fifth, two thousand twenty-four, general election ballot, on the question of whether to abolish Nelsonville City Charter. Whereas unofficial election results reported by the Athens County Board of Elections indicate the ordinance was passed by vote of the voters of the city. Whereas under Ohio law, the Athens County Board of Elections must complete its canvas of the November fifth general election ballot no later than November twentieth, two thousand twenty-four. Whereas pursuant to Nelsonville City Charter, Section ten point zero six A, an ordinance submitted via the Charter Initiative Procedure shall be considered adopted upon certification of the result. Whereas Nelsonville City Charter, Section ten point zero six A, provides in relevant part, quote, "If a majority of the qualified electorate voting on a proposed initiative vote in its favor, such initiative shall be considered adopted upon certification of the raw results and shall be treated in all respects in the same manner as ordinance or, or resolutions of the same kind adopted by council." Whereas council needs to instruct the clerk to comply with the directives of the Nelsonville City Charter, Section ten point zero six A, to ensure that the ordinance adopted by the voters on November fifth, two thousand, twenty-four is placed in the ordinance book of the city upon certification of the November fifth, two thousand, twenty-four result by the Athens County Board of Elections. Now therefore be resolved by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio's Fallows. Upon receipt from the Athens County Board of Elections of a certified copy of the ordinance, issue twenty-three, submitted to the voters of the city pursuant to Nelsonville City Charter, ten point zero six A, the council clerk is hereby instructed to direct and directed to place in the ordinance books of the city a certified copy of the ordinance. Upon fulfillment of the duties described in Section one, the council clerk shall immediately notify council of the same. Council clerk shall also provide to all city departments a copy of, certified copy of the ordinance, including the ordinance number, as placed in the ordinance books of the city. Except as expressly provided for herein, the council clerk shall take no further action on this matter unless and until provided for by law. City council hereby finds that this resolution was adopted in a meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. This resolution shall be in full force and effect at the earliest time committed by law. Gouled it off by council on first reading, the eleventh day of November, two thousand, twenty-four.
Motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second. Any citizens' comments? Yes.
Uh, the hundred ballots that weren't put in correctly for Nelsonville, will they have any effect on the total amount at all?
I'll defer that question to you, Mr. Roe. I don't believe so, I don't have any reason to believe.
I, I don't know if there is more than a hundred different.
No, there, it was, it was considerably more than that.
Okay, that, that was my only question, I don't know what the totals were.
I was informed by the Board of Elections that some of those a hundred ballots did come back and cast special ballots for that issue.
Right, they, they listed all their names and said they could come in and throw out one.
Sure, um, I just don't know if all of them did or not, but it, it shouldn't affect.
If we assume that all of them did, if it didn't matter, then it doesn't matter, okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Council discussion? Court called a roll?
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Coman?
Yes.
And Son? Yes. Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-three, twenty-four, passes. Okay, city managers report.
It'll be a short one. So as we just discussed, we wrapped up interviews and we're moving forward with getting a administrative assistant hired. Lead pickup is still ongoing, if you have requests, pick up leads from your property, please let the city know and we can get them added to the rotation. That's it, that's all, unless you guys have a question?
Yeah, any questions?
Have you decided about who's going to train? The young ladies you're going to hire?
Yeah, it'll be a combination of myself and then a member of Taylor staff a little bit, and I'm three all up on the police department.
Okay, what about anyone from the code office?
Bill will be right around, available for treatment.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, I've given the order, Ms. Sonny, would you like to start?
I would like to thank all of the veterans, past and present, for the freedom that you guys have been giving to me and to my family and to the United States of America. God bless you all.
Mr. Dunphy?
Happy Veterans Day to everyone who's served and fought for our country. My son's still there, so is Mr. Taylor's. Uh, I can't, Mr. Flowers is grandson. Due to the uncertainty in the world that's in the future coming, it seems like it's a topsy-turvy world. I just pray that good decisions are made and our sons and grandsons are put in harm's way. I'd like to reiterate what Tony just said, but I'd also like to add the four young men during my era out of the, in the military, Bobby O'Neill, Rick Andrews, Richie Polly, and my close personal friend Danny Huddy, lost their lives in Vietnam. And I, I'll definitely remember those folks here today. Plus everybody else, and like Tony said, I have a grandson that's in Japan in the Marine Corps, so pretty proud of him, and also this Friday, I keep saying this, we're having a code enforcement meeting. Mr. Joe Posey, the code enforcement officer, and Logan is going to bring, last time I looked, it was a hundred thirteen emails on, on his email, so I don't know how many will come. But it's very informative, Bill's going to go. Um, Bill and I went to Lancaster to run a few months ago, so I think that would help, will, will help him out a lot and will help me out too, you know, so. But other than that, uh, God bless, uh, God bless America.
What time is that, Mr. Flowers?
It's from ten to noon, it's a two-hour ordeal.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Taylor?
I just wanna thank all the veterans that I've known in my life and my family, and I appreciate their service. And I also wanna congratulate Mr. Sappington on his victory for county treasurer. And thank you for your service here for, you know, as our auditor, and good luck, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Lawson?
I guess I, I hope it's a good day for my brothers and sisters out there that are, are basically retired, no longer serving and are currently serving in the United States. Thank you for picking up the flag on active duty and carrying the traditions on forward.
Mr. Booth?
Yeah, I don't know how much I can say to has-beens, but, you know, there's no nobler profession than someone who will play down their life for the rest of us. And it's, it's appreciated what all you guys and gals do. Thank you.
I too wanna echo all the sentiments about the veterans and thank you so much for that. With that, um, motion to go into executive session under O R C one twenty-one point two-two G for Personnel and Legal Matters, inviting in Mr. Roe and Chief Oliver. And it's twenty-four, I haven't one, okay.
He was also on a debate.
Okay. So motion going to a second.
And are we, are special counsel, are we contacting the phone?
Um, not at this time.
Do we have a reason to go again?
Do you have an update?
Okay.
Okay, yeah, Mr. Oliver said that he can give us a quick update on that.
Okay.
So moved, I'll second that.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Coman?
Yes.
And Son? Yes. Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
And I'll note the time at seven fifty-nine P M. Okay, I'll make a motion to return from executive session at eight twenty-eight.
So moved.
Second.
Nobody listens to it, right?
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Coman?
Yes.
And Son? Yes. Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I wouldn't any fun.
Second.
Mr. Booth?
That one, yes.
Mr. Coman?
Yes.
And Son? Yes. Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Yeah.